That was great.
Good evening. Welcome to the school committee meeting of Monday, October 24th, 2016. Mr. Norris and Mr. Biggins are out of town for work-related issues, so they sorely missed. Yeah, maybe not. The first item on the agenda is the minutes of the meeting of October 11th, 2016.
Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The second one is communications. Mr. Cronin, you got any communications?
I do not have any communications this evening.
All right, so we'll skip over that. Next on the agenda is the audience. We have Mr. Patrick Finn from the RHS Teachers and President of the French On Location. Welcome.
Hi, guys. Nice to see you again.
Hey, glad to see you. Glad you could make it.
How you doing? Yeah, thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing what you want to do here.
Yeah, so as requested back in June when we were at the last meeting that I had attended, we have here with me the president of the tour group that we would be taking to go to Quebec City.
Great.
Do you have any questions for us? I'm guessing, I don't know.
Could you just give us a rundown of what we tell people?
So essentially, again, like the last time, we're looking at, I'm looking at trying to do a trip of about 30 to 35 students. Since then, I have sent home sample itineraries with the students, along with forms for their parents to sign if they were interested. And I have about 34 students who had come back right now, which is very promising. People seem to be generally pretty excited. The tour would be a three-day bus trip that would leave from the high school the morning of day one and come back in the evening on the third day. So we would be staying for a total of two nights. We would be going up to Quebec City and touring the area, going to different restaurants. Quebec City is a pretty beautiful city as far as Canada's concerned, and it reminds me a lot of Europe, so it'd be nice for them to see. And then selfishly, I'm trying to get more kids to take French, and what a great way to try and grow that program.
Good, good. Are you setting a max number of students? Would you take two buses, or would you need more students?
I don't know.
I think it's unlikely that you'd have more than one bus. We can get a 55-passenger bus for you. With students and adults, you'd take a maximum of probably 49 students, and that would be a pretty high number.
A big crew.
Yeah. I mean, even at the moment now, I have, what, six, 28, and 22. So I have 56 now at the moment. Again, I really don't see it going over 40, so one bus would be pretty much perfect, to be honest.
Okay, that sounds good. Going to make them speak French all the time they're up there?
I'll certainly try.
I know, yeah. They, up there, they make you. They kind of force you.
French first, for sure, yeah.
And are you set on the date yet, around the 26th?
The way we had left it, that we, or you all had asked me not to set a date until I had come back, but either the first or second weekend in May would be perfect. I guess I'll leave that discussion up to you all. But either the beginning or middle of May.
You were talking about Memorial Day, right?
Towards Memorial Day would, we could still do, I think, at this point. It might be a little bit tough.
I would bet the prices would be a lot more, because usually I think off-season is the first two weeks of May in most vacations.
Traffic too.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to deal with anything around that vacation weekend for the kid's safety, if we could choose.
I mean, cost-related, as you're bringing up, it definitely would be a lot more affordable to do it, not that weekend in particular.
What kind of representation do you have up there? God forbid something tragic happens. We know we're sending very able chaperones and leaders, but how can they fall back, and how can you help them?
Well, we have, nominally, we have an office there, and we have somebody up there uncalled 24 hours a day. I might just back up a little bit and tell you a little history of the companies and who I am. Patrick was right that I'm the, was the president of this company. I am the president, founder of French On Location. But French On Location on August 8th was acquired by ACIS. And French On Location, I would say, in all modesty, is thought of in the industry as probably the, just the operator of the highest-quality educational tours for students of foreign languages anywhere, even in the industry. But all of our stuff was domestic, so we're doing short domestic trips to Montreal and Quebec City. And we were acquired by ACIS, who is thought in the industry pretty much as the operator of the highest-quality trips to overseas destinations. So to me, it's a marriage made in heaven, but I'm no longer the president. I'm the, I'm a vice president now, one of, one of a bunch of them. But we have a staff of 65 in Boston, and we have a small office. And actually, we don't have an ownership interest in this office, but it's about a partnership interest in the office in Quebec City for about 20 years. And we have a number of tour guides. ACIS calls them tour managers. I'm still trying to get used to this terminology. But many of them have been with us for 10 or 15, or even 20 years. And I've been planning these trips to Quebec City for 30 years. And so we have refined them, and polished them, and re-refined them, and tweaked them, and we have hired and vetted many, many, many guides, and let some go. And it is the guides, not the guides that know the most or talk the most, but it's the guides that are best able to relate to kids on these trips, that we have retained over the years. So honestly, I think that your kids and your chaperones are in very good hands. We use only very reliable motor coach operators, we, or bus operators. We'll probably use somebody like a Bloom or an MBT. We do not ever use mom-and-pop organizations, just because we like the depth of, and the institutional training and the institutional maintenance that these large companies have. And in short, we're, I think we're pretty good at what we're doing, and we're gonna, I promise you, we'll take very good care of Patrick and the kids.
Do you have a date in mind? Let's set a date tonight, if we can do that.
Sure. Off the top of my head, I'm trying to think.
Do you have a school calendar?
That's my only concern.
With that, I mean, let's get that done, so you can advertise it that way, and see what the pricing is.
Perfect, yes. Because the sooner the better, that would be great.
Pretty much standard for most trips that we approve. Everyone always has a date, so.
Perfect.
I might tell you that in terms of seasonal, seasonality in costs, the season changes on May 1st. So the month of April is a comparative bargain. Prices go up on May 1st, and then they go way up on June 1st. And they're pretty high on Memorial Day. Memorial Day might be sold out already, but it's a very busy weekend.
We were thinking the 12th, just because Cinco de Mayo is the week before, and that's also a little bit crowded.
The 12th would be perfect, if that's okay.
12, 13, 14?
Of May.
Do you think, Dick?
Of May.
As far as I know, we can make it happen on those dates. You know, it might be, although I don't think so, that it just happens to be a week that a whole bunch of other trips have booked, but it's unlikely at this point.
At the same time, 12, 13, and 14?
Sure.
Okay. The next weekend is 19, 20th, and 21st.
That is Victoria Day weekend in Quebec, or in Canada.
Right.
And I think that you're better off a little bit earlier.
Okay. 50, 6th, and 7th of May?
Cinco de Mayo.
Would work for us.
Cinco de Mayo, but the day, you know.
Yeah, that would be.
We're going north and south on that one.
Yeah, if that's all right with you all, the 50, 6th, and 7th is great.
It's up to you. I mean, if you want to try, shoot for that date and see what you can do for reservations and stuff like that.
It's a real problem. You can get back to us with another date. I mean, the main thing is.
Yeah, we can go with the.
Plan on the 1st. If you can't, try the 2nd, and then just let us, like Dick said, let us know, so that we can just make sure that you're not getting pushed out of everything.
If you can give us two options, we'll make it happen.
Okay, 5th, 6th, and 7th, or 12, 13, and 14. Because the other one is Victoria, right? The following weekend, 19, 20th?
Actually, no, one of those weekends would be Mother's Day weekend, and you're not gonna, you're not gonna.
That's the 6th, because it's the 8th.
That might be the.
SATs at high school.
SATs at the high school on the 6th.
Okay, so that's correct. So 6th. So it'll be 12, 13, 14 is pretty much what you're looking at. And worst case, you could try the next weekend with the Victoria holiday, but, so you have that option.
We should Google, we should Google that, we should Google Mother's Day.
Right.
He's right. It's actually at the end of the SAT weekend.
14, 15, and 14, the 6th is SATs at high school.
So.
So we're scrimmed either way, but I think SATs, we can't interrupt.
If you go Thursday, Friday, Saturday, that'll work. A lot of groups avoid Mother's Day altogether.
Right.
And.
But we don't want to take them out of school for a couple of days, so it's not that we don't value Mother's Day, but the sacrifice on the school thing, we can't take them out of school for two days.
No, that's not reasonable.
So now we're, now we're in a corner.
Yeah, I mean, we could, if you'd like to try, we could still do the Mother's Day weekend.
I think that that might be.
That's pushing it.
Yeah, okay.
We're voting you for that one.
19, 20th?
Yeah.
19, 20th, and 21st. I don't know.
Would April work?
I'm looking at, here's the issue with April.
They have the other trip to.
Yeah, they have a whole bunch of other trips going on. And the first weekend that you could use is 28, 29, and the 30th of April, but they just came off a four-week of vacation a week before that.
Exactly, yeah.
We're gonna get more options though.
Why don't we let them get back to us with a date, having checked with the principal, and to be sure that we're not conflicting with anything like our SATs or something like that?
What about early April?
Again, the same issue. We have, you know, right in the middle.
Other trips are.
The middle, right, I mean, we only have five to 10, 14 days of school that, because you have, let's see, Good Friday on the 14th, so you've got all the Christian holidays going on there. And then the following week is the vacation, you know, week, spring break. You know, so. Take a look at your calendar. See what you can do. Come up with some dates.
You can talk to the principal, like he said, and I'm sure you guys can figure out a couple.
We'll approve it based upon Mr. Cronin's, Dr. Cronin's recommendation. Is that all right?
I think you have one other issue, too, that hasn't been brought up. Since, since we're missing one of our members, I feel compelled to speak on his behalf. You're bringing this, I see the chaperone former superintendent, John Rutchless, who has a track record of wandering off during field trips. So I just want to know if you have a plan in place?
I would require GPS.
Yep. I think that's an excellent point.
I work in Boston. I get you.
GPS.
I hope they're not terribly expensive.
Actually, a leash.
A leash, okay. I want to make sure. Get something there. I know Mr. Norris would want to be sure of that.
I'll make a motion. We approve the trip subject to the dates.
And I will second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is that all right?
Thank you.
Yeah, perfect, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Top of your porters.
Let's see. Okay, where we going? Oh, next is the superintendent's report.
Excellent, thank you. A few things tonight. First thing, just another note on our senior site visit from the MSBA. On November 9th, we're going to get a visit from the Massachusetts Building Authority to look at Memorial Park School and the Jefferson School. And we've put together what I feel is an excellent committee to represent the district. We're particularly grateful to selectman chair Ed Kimball, and our liaison to the finance committee, Rich Penny, who's going to be joining us for this visit. This is a very important afternoon for the town, and again, we won't meet again until after that has taken place, so I just want everyone to be thinking of us on November 9th at 3 o'clock, when we, when we tour. And also, yeah, Dan Biggins is school chair. So we're very excited about that. The next thing I'd like to mention is the Rockland Education Foundation. This past Friday, I submitted well over 50 grant applications to the foundation on behalf of teachers and administrators from all five schools. The Rockland Education Foundation continues to be just a tremendous asset to the schools and to the town, but it's great to have this innovation that they encourage. So we have teachers who are really trying to find ways to stretch what they normally do in the classroom, and these grants really provide much-needed additional funds, usually somewhere between $20,000 and $25,000 a year, so it's quite a lot of money. And I met last week with the board, along with all the principals, and we're going to have some very exciting news to announce in the very near future, so a little teaser there for our next meeting. I would like to point out that tomorrow, there's a very important memorial taking place in Rockland for Army Staff Sergeant Veteran Sean Christopher O'Connell. So tomorrow, Rockland High School and Rogers Middle School students will join in honoring Army Staff Sergeant Veteran Sean Christopher O'Connell. He's a graduate of Rockland High School, and he recently passed away due to natural causes. Rockland students will line Union Street as Staff Sergeant O'Connell's funeral procession makes its way to the Holy Family Church. Sean was a veteran of Operation Iraqi Freedom, Operation Enduring Freedom Afghanistan, and the recipient of Combat Action Badge and multiple commendations. Governor Baker has ordered flags to half-staff for tomorrow. And again, the Rockland Public Schools are honored to be a part of tomorrow's, tomorrow's event. As part of my continuing superintendent's entry plan, my tour, it feels like a tour. Last week, I was very, very busy, met some new, new groups, and felt like I made a few new friends. I met with the Council on Aging, and I want to thank Director Peg Bryant, and chairman of the committee, Dr. John Rogers, and members of the board, including our own Ms. Penny, sitting to my right tonight. It's just a great group, and finding ways that we can support one another, I think, is important moving forward. I think we have a great relationship with them, but they are our neighbors, and so it's important that we maintain that kind of relationship. I had a great time. I also met with the Board of Health, Janice McCarthy, who's our health agent, the chairman, Steve Nelson, board member of Victoria Diebel, and Patricia Halliday, and senior administrative health assistant, Delshaun Flip. So I want to thank them. They've been working with Colleen Forlizzi and our very own Adele Leonard on some recycling projects over the past year or so, and they spoke very highly of their work with them. But we look forward to upgrading our own recycling here in school. I live with a Vermont-born recycler, and I am a, I have to admit, I used to be horrible, and I see a lot that we can do, we can do much, much better in the district, and I hope to see that improve. And I know that the Board of Health is going to be an important partner with us in the future. And finally, I met, now this is in addition to some PTOs and groups that I've been meeting. This is, these are community groups. The Board of Library Trustees. So I want to thank Director Beverly Brown, Chairman Kathy Looney, and members Janet Can, Patricia Foley, Coral Leonardi, Jack Ward, and Ken. I won't try to pronounce his last name, but they tell me they just call him Zeb, so Zeb. But again, another, another extension, another great partner. They're very interested in literacy. They're very interested in young readers, and in supporting us, in supporting our students. We talked about summer reading. We talked about ways that our community and our students use that library every day after school. So I look forward to working with them in the future. And my final note, you know, we have many, many staff members here in the school, and sometimes we just think of this place as teachers and students. And our staff members play an important role, not just in the jobs they do in the cafeteria, cleaning the buildings. They, they can sometimes be important mentors to the kids. They are, they're always keeping an eye out for what's going around school. And I received an excellent email, or I was included on an email, that was sent to Jan Sheehan, principal of Memorial Park, last week. And this email came from our school resource officer, Officer Schnebel. And he wrote, "I wanted to pass along some nice work by Memorial Park's head custodian, Mike Callahan. This morning, when I was out monitoring traffic with him, I saw a person that is known to the Rockland Police walking around the playground area. I let Mike know that this person is not someone who should be around the schools, and will let me know if he sees them again. This afternoon, I received a call from Mike stating he had seen the male party again in front, in front of Memorial Park School. I won't fill in the rest of it, but police did respond." And, and what, what Officer Schnebel points out is that Mike identified a potential issue, and he kept kids inside, and he kept his eyes open, and all around, it was a great job by Mike. And this is just one example of what our, our staff members do on a regular basis. And so I want to thank Mike, but I also want to, again, take this opportunity to point out how important our cafeteria workers, our custodians, and I'm going to miss people and probably get yelled at tomorrow for not thanking them, too. But we're a community of many, many people, and this is just a great example of that.
The work of the school resource officer as well.
Absolutely, yeah. He's been, we're very, very fortunate. So that's all from me.
It is a community effort. One of the things being thrown, put into this position, I forgot to introduce Ms. Shannon. Would you like to introduce yourself again to the audience, and tell us a little bit about yourself, just a tad bit?
I'm Shannon Lindell. I'm a senior at Rockland High School, and I'm a member of National Honor Society, student government, and the magazine Images.
Thank you very much. Any questions? You know, just, you know, just throw something at me, you know.
He likes questions.
I like questions, yeah.
You do?
I do. Next on the agenda is reports. We have financial reports for September, school department, high school student activities, middle school student activities, and cafeteria.
One question. On the cafeteria report, I see there's a swing of about $22,000 last year to this year, in the wrong way.
I noticed that.
And are we, is this signs of things that come off?
There were three pays in September, and two last year.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
There's some subtle increases, though, I noticed also in their report. Some subtle increase in costs.
No, but the payroll thing, that explains it. That's it. Okay, okay, thank you. I'll make a motion that we.
Four motions?
Four motions, yeah.
Four seconds.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Old business. We have fundraisers completed.
Lots of fundraisers.
We got a lot of fundraisers completed. You want to, here's what I got. Okay. 2016, 2010, that's the other one. I'm sorry. What do you got?
There's 10 total, plus one that was canceled.
Okay, one was canceled. Okay. How'd they do?
10 minus the, 11 minus the one. They did great. Everyone did great. And there was a wide range of accomplishments, and a lot by the RMS PAC, $5,000. That's wonderful. Everyone's doing great.
Yeah. That was the Meadow Farms catalog, huh? Not bad. Hey, good job. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, hard at work.
All right. Next is the request for approval of the Rockland Daycare Program's parent handbook. This is the second reading.
And if you have any questions, do you need to tell our daycare director? He's here, along with Marissa Altisauri, our assistant daycare director.
Anybody have any questions?
No, I'd make a motion that we adopt.
I was just curious, not about this, about how many people they have as part-time. So let's motion this, and then I'll ask her a question.
Okay, the motion by Mr. Fit.
Second, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
I was just curious, do you have, if you roughly knew, and I don't expect you to know, how many part-time people that you have enrolled?
They're mostly probably my after-school.
Mostly the after-schools? Yeah.
So all of mine should be part-time. Yours, I'm.
Cool. Thank you very much. Just curious.
All right. Next on the agenda, oh, new business. Mr. Dr. Cronin, budget update?
Yes. My PowerPoint run. Thank you very much. Right arrow, excellent. We're waiting for it to warm up, though, right?
I love the screen.
Who's doing the silhouettes?
I'm not good at that. I do not have those skills.
Show your age. Kids wouldn't even know what to do.
Little bunny, was it? Bunny fight, fight?
There we go.
I would, I'd be a little bit.
Okay, so all major line items are, are on track, as planned for in our budget, with the exception of special education, which is always volatile. For the past two years, costs have remained level for special education, and the real volatile piece of special education continues to be out-of-district placements. And this year, since July 2016, we have found ourselves spending $870,000 more than anticipated on out-of-district costs. The increase is solely due to move-ins and unanticipated out-of-district placements. We have tracked it to the dollar. We know where, where, and when, and who, and it is completely, was unforeseen. Fortunately, the school, and Ms. Forlizzi, and my predecessor, John Rutchless, were extremely fiscally responsible. And so we do have circuit breaker money and sped revolving funds that we have saved and have built up, and so we are able to cover the costs. It will have budgetary implications going forward. If you're short $870,000 one year, when you move ahead the next year, you need to find that again. So it's concerning on a number of levels, but at the same time, we're very, we're very glad to be in the position that we are, we are not cutting anything or changing anything that we're doing this year. But that said, we are going to be freezing, we're freezing the budget at this point. And I'll tell you, this, this last point bothers me to a certain extent. I went to professional development this past week at Gillette Stadium, Technology Fair, and I received a, an email, a thank-you email, from one of the, one of the attendees. And she's one of my favorite young teachers of all time, because I've seen what, the excitement that she's created in her department and in the school. And she wrote, thanking, just saying how proud she was to work here, and that she was, she was nervous about coming to our district from elsewhere because of the professional development she received. And being here in Rockland, she's felt continuously supported, and that she's felt invested in. And we are only as good as our teachers, and so I'm very concerned about budgetary crunches limiting the amount of professional development. So I do want everyone to know, teachers and community in general, that we are going to continue to be as fiscally, you know, careful as we always have been, but we're, we, we do not want to cut out professional development. It's very important to our, to our teachers. And so that last item concerns me. But, but at the same time, I am very grateful for the responsibility that's led the district over the past handful of years, and put us in a position to be able to absorb $870,000 out of nowhere, so.
Just hope nobody else moves in.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. And it goes up and down. And again, we've had two years of very steady, steady costs, so we've been fortunate. But it is concerning, and as a first-year superintendent, I'm, I'm on a new weight loss program called I Don't Sleep or Eat, but that will pass, because I like to eat too much, so. But I don't know if there's any questions that we have.
You said you used the circuit breaker money. Any more circuit breaker money? Any circuit breaker coming down the line from the state?
We're going to apply for extraordinary relief, and hopefully we'll.
We get some more, yeah.
We believe we qualify for extraordinary relief.
Yeah, probably do.
25 percent over your previous budget. We do have our director of student services, Linda Miniglia, with us if you have any specific questions.
Well, haven't been around a while like Tom has, and not so much with Vetsie, because she's relatively new, but this doesn't come as a total surprise. We've seen it before. We'll see it again. We tend to be upset by it, but we shouldn't be, because these kids are great kids, and we want to do the best for them that we can. But we just do hope that no one else sees what a great place this is to be.
That's the talent. Yeah, we're so good. Everyone wants to come here.
That's fine, yeah. Yeah, it is a good point, yeah. So do you, Ms.?
Do you have any questions?
Do you have any comments right there?
I mean, there's nothing we couldn't. There's nothing we couldn't.
Hey, no, you want to get up there, like, I'll stop.
No, I like her.
Good evening. The only things I can say is that we watch the budget very closely all the time. We do have some students at the end of this year that will be graduating and aging out. Again, you always have to be mindful of, like, who moves in, or if we have students that need out-of-district placements. I'm almost positive that we are able to apply for the extraordinary relief. That will happen in February, so I'll be, you know, applying for that.
Keep us up to date on how that plays as a superintendent.
Right.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
And also note to any legislators out there, I mean, this, this is an issue that's been, that's been brought around to the State House over and over and over, and I believe. that's been brought around to the State House over and over and over, and I believe that it affects lower-income districts at a higher rate than others, and it really is a shame that it can't be looked at. I was with Dr. Rogers the other day and said, we've been talking about this since the 1960s and made very little progress, so if there are any, I know we have a very large viewing audience of legislators, but if you know any, then-
Why don't we do a survey, send them a note and say, hey, this is what we think you're, you want to vote, you've got to vote.
There you go.
Yeah, I'll do that, I'll write that.
So I could segue nicely into the next section if that's okay with-
Is it ELL?
Yes.
Everybody knows what ELL stands for, right?
Yes, so English Language Learners Enrollment Update. So the past three years, we've had a substantial increase in Rockland ELL population, again, English language learners. And the primary country of origin for our ELL students is Brazil, and their first language is primarily Portuguese. This is as of today, what we're looking at from 2014 to 2016, 17. So we have nearly, and the numbers are changing by the day. We have students who are still being tested in the kindergarten, and again, we do have students enrolling on a fairly regular basis. I'm going to go ahead to this next slide. So that is the change just from September of this year to October of this year, so that you can see, we continue. Now, some of the elementary numbers, they look very large, but some of that has to do with kids who were not tested, who are now ELL because kindergarten isn't tested until the year, so I don't want to be misleading, but you can see we've had a sharp increase. And it's been really dramatic for Rogers Middle and the high school, so I'm going to back up. This is a breakdown by school over the three-year period, so you can get a little bit better sense. The real jumps have been in the middle school and high school, and when you have students in Level One, it's a five, kids, you know, take the weed at tests and they test one through five, and when they pass out of five, they're into six and then they no longer acquire services. So when you get a student who's just learning English in the middle school and high school, there's a sense of real urgency because of state, they have to pass all of the same tests that every other student has to pass. The one thing I want to say, I'll probably say it twice during this presentation, I do not in any way want to imply that we are anything but thrilled to have these students. They are extraordinary, I've spent time with them over the past few years, their families are extraordinary, and they work very, very hard, and I want, I had it on a slide before, but I took it down because I thought it was corny, but they are Bulldogs, they are Rockland Bulldogs, and we are very, very glad to have them, so I don't want to imply otherwise.
You said that we're very tight on residency requirements and things like that, we know they all live in Rockland.
We watch residency very, very carefully, absolutely, yeah, absolutely. So what we've done so far, I just wanted to give you, we are required by the state, and it's really a federal requirement, to, that our teachers and our administrators participate in sheltered English immersion training. So no teacher is going to be recertified without having this training, and now most people who go to school to become a teacher, it's included in their curriculum. So that is one thing that we have been doing.
We're also with the retail, you know, are everybody's retail certified, SEI certified?
Well, yeah, we're definitely in compliance, but again, when you see the jump, it becomes, it becomes, yeah, it becomes a bit of an issue. I've had focus groups, and I know we've held focus groups with students and families to try to get a better idea of how to help them, and we, in 2015, last year, we expanded the role of one of our paraprofessionals to include translation and tutoring, and this year, we added one full-time teacher of ELL, but currently, we employ three full-time teachers of English language learners, plus we have some translation. So going forward, what I anticipate is, you know, continuing our targeted ELL professional development. Our teachers need skills, need systems, need support in how to handle four or five students who come into your class and don't speak a word of English, and it's a challenge for them, but I know that they're up for it, so we need to continue to support them. What we're finding is that it's not so much the English language learner instruction that we're in need of, a lot of it is very basic, we need translation help, the middle school and high school level especially. The young ones, say a grade-two student who comes in, they'll spend time with an English language learner instructor and go into class and very quickly pick up, pick up the language. The high school, you have students who have studied math, English, science, and English in their language, but they've never lived in their home country, but they've never, say, spoken the language, so they have unique challenges, so translation seems to be more of an issue for them.
Also on top of this, it's something that many people may not think about, you also have to talk with the parents. So it's not only the teachers that are trying to teach the kids English, then you have to talk with the parents of these kids in a language that they understand to explain what you're doing with their kids.
Right, so I've mentioned our paraprofessional, Nia Callahan, is a wonderful resource to us, and she's a parent, was, began as a paraprofessional, we then expanded her role into being a tutor. She is an attorney, a bar, a member of the bar in Brazil, and just very passionate about working with us, so we continue to expand her role. She takes calls at night on a regular basis, and we first said, you know, are you sure you want to do that? But I think the fact is that that's when she can be, that's when the parents can reach out to her, and she says, if I answer a question then, I don't, we don't have to try to answer it tomorrow during the day. So she's been wonderful and I can see her role expanding, she's been a great asset.
A question, do we send out notices to the parents in the language?
Yes, that's something that we've been working at quite a bit, and there was actually a workshop that was going on the same time as our last school committee meeting, where Sarah Halagadis and Nia invited in parents, and I think they had a full, pretty much a full house in our lecture hall, talking about, you know, lunch forms and how to do all those things, so we're going to continue to expand that.
Right. How about Aspen?
Well, yeah, that was, that was one of the things they covered also, yeah. So we're, and our forms are translated, we've worked hard on that. What we've found is that Google Translator is just not adequate, it's just not adequate, so again, we have Nia who's gone through our forms, and we're, so we're working at it as quickly as we can, and again, we're very glad to have these figures.
So it's predominantly, you know, the language is Portuguese?
Yes.
Do we have any other ELLs, like, you know, any-
We had a young man from China who graduated last year, and he'll be running the country in a matter of, amazing, but as of now, I think our, the vast majority of our students are from Brazil and they speak Portuguese. Yeah. And again, I think we're going to need to add additional ELL staff, so that's it.
Thank you, any other questions? Just a notification, okay. So, water testing! All right, Ms. Forlizzi.
We have the results in your packet, but we're happy to report that all samples were taken from the, every school in the district, and we have no reports of lead or copper above the state standards levels.
Great.
And we've sent out emails to parents and families and staff.
The water system, I mean, the buildings are new, relatively speaking, you know, I mean, you know, so that shouldn't be a problem, and the water department, you know, we think we have good water in Rockland.
It's great to see that most of them were not detectable, and then those that were in the older buildings were very minute.
Very minute.
So that's really good.
Yes.
Something to mention though, the crew comes out from that building that was Jefferson Memorial Park, but we're concerned. There's got to be some older stuff in there.
Absolutely.
We're concerned.
Yeah.
I just have to say with the water testing, Mark Schomar, facilities director, and our head custodians were very involved in getting it done. Took a lot of time to get it done, so thank them.
So we don't have any markings around here, like, you know, hand washing only?
Yes, we do.
We do.
Okay, we have those, we have those, what do I?
They're all posted. It's not for drinking, it's posted as hand washing only.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, let's see, on the next on the agenda, let me take them on the right side, okay, Mr. Harrison, high school entry plan, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, thank you for having me here tonight. I'm very excited to present my entry plan findings. It's not the actual plan itself, it's just the findings. The plan itself will come in the spring after I present the findings to this group tonight and working with Dr. Cron with his district strategic plan, and then I'll come together in the spring and revise the school improvement plan as we see fit with the school council. But tonight, I just wanted to share the process I've been going through for the past four months. It's been a great four months, it's been a quick four months, but the purpose of this entry plan was really five different goals. The first goal was really to try to understand the needs of all the stakeholders in the Rockland community, the staff, the students, the parents, the community members at large. In addition to really collaboratively, the second piece is to work on the school improvement plan, to see if it needs adjustments, to see if things needed to change, if we need to further go into depth in a certain area, or take out an area that we maybe have accomplished. And also to engage in positive partnerships. When you go through this process of meeting with different people, you really get to get to know people, and that's a huge piece to this, and really creating a culture where everyone is heard and that the communication is also strong. And the last one, which is probably one of the most important pieces, to really embrace the traditions, and that's something I've been fortunate to do the past four months. The process I've been using actually started April 1st of 2016, just after I was hired. I had the opportunity in the first three months there of visiting many events, I had the opportunity to attend the Spelman Oratorical Contest, National Honor Society induction, graduation, student government council banquet, and the prom, so all were great events and really got, let me have a chance to observe the Rockland community. The second phase began July 1st, it was a great day, it was Friday, nobody was here, it was the Friday before July 4th, I got to move my stuff in, and really featured getting to know Rockland. I've had a lot of interviews with staff, students, parents, former principals, the high school. I think I've had the opportunity to sit down with every principal since the 1960s, which you can't say in a lot of school systems. And then Phase Three is really the phase I'm in, right, well, I finished Phase Three a little earlier, which is analyzing the findings, which is I'm going to present to you tonight, and Phase Four, which was going to occur in November, which is occurring tonight, is really the presentation. I've already given this presentation to staff, and I've started to give it to school council, I just haven't finished it. The guiding questions, I use the same five questions in all of my entry plan meetings. The first question I really didn't ask because I kind of knew who I was talking to, whether it was students or parents or staff, but the second through fifth question here were the same questions, and I purposely asked the same open-ended questions. I didn't want a quantitative survey, I wanted really open-ended questions to really have conversation with people. The second question there is, what are you most proud of? The second, the third question is, what are the strengths of Rockland High School? The fourth question, what are the key issues and challenges, with the understanding that every district always has challenges, has needs, has issues, regardless of very, very strong, if it's a very strong district or not. And the last question, what are your expectations of me as a high school principal? I had the opportunity to speak with staff, and I actually had them work in interdisciplinary groups, so I had math, English, history, science teachers answer these five questions together with department heads as the leaders, and I purposely did this because I didn't want to have them talk in departments, because often you'll have similar answers if you go by department. I also didn't want to do one-on-one because I wanted them to have a free-flowing exchange of conversation. They had great conversations. They had to provide a form back to me, reporting out on things they agreed on, and then areas where they had dissent, disagreement, and very helpful information, which I'll present to you. And I also had informal conversations with staff throughout the summer and into September. Students and parents had the option to fill out an anonymous survey. I had 40 parents respond, 22 students and three unidentified, so I'm not sure if they're a parent or student, but we'll just consider them one or the other. Students also participated in three focus groups that were held during the day. I wanted to do this randomly, so I didn't necessarily go and interview student government council or the football team. I purposely visited studies that I randomly selected, and also an elective class as well that had a mix of freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors, so I had the opportunity to ask these questions to 80 students. And lastly, parents, I had held five focus groups in July, August, and September, two in the morning, three in the evening, and I had 30 parents attend. The first question I had asked was, what are the strengths and what are we proud of? And those two questions I lumped together because I got similar answers, and it just ended up being a little bit easier if I put it together. And you'll see in red, staff, students, and parents, all said the same thing, and this really was the number-one answer, if we were playing the Family Feud. The number-one commonality was strong sense of community and Bulldog pride, and I really wasn't too surprised by that because that was something I heard in April when I first came here, people talked about the sense of community. So that was really the first takeaway I had. The second takeaway that students, staff, parents all had said were this quality of facilities here, which I think we all agree are very, very great. The third piece, staff quality and commitment to students, so I'm looking at that commonalities box in green. What's unique here is I've been in three great districts, and what I can say about staff, the staff in all three districts are, have been exceptional, but it's rare here that students and parents are saying the quality and commitment of the teachers stand out, and they're very proud of that, because that doesn't happen everywhere. You'll always see the administration a lot of times because they know the staff, they're working with the staff, but for parents and students to say that, I have found it's very unique, because coming from my two prior districts, I didn't always get that sense. So I think that's a really positive thing here, it's a respect for the school system. And the last piece, the kids, and I have to say the kids are humble, because they didn't identify themselves as a strength, but the parents and the staff both had the kids, and they both said it the same way, the kids. They didn't really add any adjectives, they just, I kind of knew what they meant to, having been here now four months. Things where people didn't necessarily agree, but things that, other pieces that came out is the staff felt the new program offerings were great, whether it's the robotics, the engineering, those pathways were identified by staff, parents, clubs, activity, sports, travel opportunities came up as strengths, the support services like Saturday School and Homework Club, and really the range of course offerings. Students had also mentioned that they felt really respected by other communities, and then the graduation rate. When I asked the student a follow-up question, well, what is the graduation rate here, they said 60%. I said, no, it's 90%, so I said, oh, can't be happy with 60%. The needs, so then the third question was the needs, and the commonalities, the two takeaways which you see in red and blue in the bottom right corner, the first one is scheduling and course offerings for all students, and then keeping the school safe and drug-free for all students as well. And these two takeaways are things that I think any school district is probably always struggling with, these are just things I felt I heard the most in talking to students, parents, and staff. And staff, to specify, you'll see in red, it doesn't exactly match to that wording, but you see, they mentioned unbalanced class sizes, the percent of students that are focused on as a whole, course leveling and offerings, and then the English language support they also mentioned. The students had used the word scheduling, and the parents had said scheduling, meaning they don't always get the courses they want in terms of electives. And then parents had also meant that they wish there was a focus not so much on testing, and that it was more comprehensive. Other needs that have come up, staff have mentioned space issues, and they felt sometimes there's this Rockland feeling of inferiority compared to other towns. Students had said there were some issues with the bathrooms, they wish they had better school lunch, they wish they had better ventilation in the boys' locker room. I think we fixed that. The tardy policy as well, and then they wish they could have food in the classrooms. Parents had mentioned they wish they had an updated webpage, Naviance would be used more frequently, and that grades would be posted online more consistently, so those are things we're definitely going to work on. I think you'll see everything on this page is something we're going to work on. And expectations of principal, the two big things that came up were visibility and leading with consistency. Staff had also mentioned they wanted a principal who was organized, that could create a positive community in that new federal and state laws. Students had mentioned they want somebody that can connect with them, they want somebody that can listen as well as understand their needs. Parents had mentioned communication is important, a principal that can challenge everyone, which I really liked, I really liked that answer, somebody that could challenge everyone, I felt was powerful, and fight for what you need and be afraid to advocate, being a strong leader, keeping everyone safe, and really communicating with the middle school. I think every one of these things on this slide is very, very good, that you'd want a principal to do. So I had these conversations with students, parents, staff, but I also looked at other data, because that's a big piece to it, and I tried to triangulate the data and the conversations. And I looked at the school improvement plan, student handbook, positive behavior intervention survey results, that was a survey administered to high school staff last year, the program of studies, the collective bargaining agreement, the DESI, Department of Ed, school performance data on their website, the last NEASC accreditation report, and then just overall my observations from attendance at events. And the first, this slide here really talks about enrollment, because if you think about a lot of, everything comes back to the kids, comes back to who makes up our- it, a lot of, everything comes back to the kids, comes back to who makes up our building. And this slide hopefully articulates our population. Our enrollment has increased over the past six years from 502 to 634. So that's a big jump. So when the staff is talking about space issues, they're kind of right, there are space issues because of the increase in enrollment. It's a good problem to have. The faculty has also increased kind of incrementally. Student-teacher ratio, I didn't calculate for this year, because that comes from the state, and they haven't calculated it yet. And then the percent special ed, the same, but you'll notice an increase in special ed in the last six years. It was 10.8%, now it's 14%. English language learners is actually, it says 2.4 there right now, but it's actually about 3% now, as we've gone from 7 to 17 students, just in the past year. And then our free and reduced lunch is up to 40, that 43% is a calculation we came up with, but the DESI hasn't reported that yet, but it'll probably be in the 44, 43% range. So this is our population in Rockland High School. I also looked at class sizes, because you'll remember that one of the takeaways from staff mentioned unbalanced class sizes. So I wanted to look at that and see if that actually was happening. And this is the medians, not the average class sizes. I wanted to use the median because of outliers. So if we had a class size of eight in an AP physics class, that wouldn't skew the numbers for the middle science class size number. So what you'll see here is pretty realistic and consistent with high schools across the state. You'll see that when the staff was talking about unbalanced class sizes, they were actually correct, though. Because, for example, in math, we had 32 math sections, eight of the 32 math sections have 27 or more students, but then 10 of the 32 sections have fewer than 18. So that's something we really need to work on from a scheduling standpoint. It's not a, the fact that we need a math teacher necessarily, it's the fact that we need to think about course offerings for all students, and really how we're going to be able to make it more manageable. And sometimes, sometimes it is that those singletons that drive the schedule, the singletons we love, a singleton like AP calculus, where we have one section that we got to get that on that student's schedule. So it really requires a lot of thoughtful planning. Attendance data, I wanted to look at attendance data, because the students had mentioned they didn't like the tardy policy. So I looked at our attendance rate, which has been pretty stable. It's actually increased very, to 93% since 2011. The state average is about 94.9%. So we're still below the state average in attendance. The issue right now, I think, is the chronically absent. We have 18.9% of our students who are chronically absent, which is defined as 10% or more of the school year. So that's about 18 days. That's a lot of time that they're absent. So that's something we're really trying to address as an administrative team and staff. And we all know, if you're not there, it's hard to learn. So that's a big piece of our emphasis. Student conduct data. I didn't find much, many trends on student conduct data when I looked at, because I was really trying to figure out patterns to make observations. The only two that really came up were leaving school without permission, and failure to report to detentions and Saturday school. The rest of the infractions that we have occur so infrequently, that it really didn't give me any meaningful data, which is a good thing. That's a good, that's a good, that's a good thing. Student success data. Our graduation rate has really been strong, and you can see that in the culture of the school. Students expect to graduate, they expect to succeed, and it's gone from 84 to 92% in the past five years, which is great. And that really helps and contributes positively to our level-one status. And then 80% are pursuing secondary education, 63% are going to four-year schools, 18, about 18, 17% are going to two-year schools. And that's been pretty stable over the past five years. And the last piece of my journey in learning about Rockland High School was to look at assessment data. And I know we have plans to talk about MCAS data in future meetings, but I thought I would just give you highlights. I'm going to skip over the table, because I'd rather just talk about the summary points. For English Language Arts, I asked the department heads in math, science, and English to give me an overview of how they felt the results were. And these were some of the findings from my conversations with each of them. They were very proud of the increasing number of students receiving advanced each year. So in English Language Arts, it increased from 33% advanced in 2013 to 40% were advanced in 2016. Student growth percentiles had been decreasing for three years, but they increased this past year. So that's, that was definitely a highlight. And then there has been a widened gap between students with disabilities and students without disabilities, in terms of the percent that were proficient in advanced on their MCAS. In 2014, about 53% were proficient in advanced for students with disabilities. And then 2015, 69%, which is very, very high, it's very good. And then 2016, it dipped to 38%. Now, I always say use caution interpreting this, because it could depend on the cohort of students. So to really analyze it properly, we have to look at a few years. And just when it dips one year, it's hard, you don't want to generalize based on just a dip in one year and overreact to it. And then the increasing number of students, this is the same argument here, it increased from 4% to 10%. But if you go back to 2014, in 2013, the needs improvement and failures were 9% and 8%. So the 2015 year was very low, at 4%. But nevertheless, it did go down to 10%. So it could be cohort-specific, not something that the teachers are doing differently, or anything different in curriculum. It could just be the cohort of students. Math, you're going to find similar findings in math, and I'm going to go to the summary as well. 50% of last year's class scored advanced. I think that's phenomenal, to have 50% of your students the year before, 33%. So I think that's indicative of the rigor for some of our top students that they're getting exposed to. Student growth percentile also increased for our students after dipping for three years. And then the gap has also widened, that's why I keep going back to this. It could be cohort-specific, it could be that class, because you're seeing similar results across math and ELA, and we know they're not the same subject. So I think you're seeing also a widening gap between special education students and non-special education students. The math is 5% below the state average, English is currently 1% below the state average.
Were there any significant changes in the tests?
It's interesting you say that, Mr. Phelps, because the test has been pretty consistent. What we'll see is, we will be seeing in the next few years, some changes with the MCAS 2.0, so it's an opportunity there as well. So, nothing, nothing that stands out from what the department heads have said.
Does it look like the cohorts that, you know, the control? I mean, is that, I mean, I, I see, I see cohorts, you know, and all of a sudden, bang, you get one that's really great, and then you get some that...
My answer to that is, I think it could be cohort-driven, because the student growth percentile has gone up in English and math. So that means the kids are growing at a pretty, faster rate than other classes have moved. So maybe it could be cohort-driven.
I think so.
I mean, all you need is one outlier, and that's going to skew that, so.
That's true, too. So I think next year, we'll have a better answer to that, because if it dips again, then we can say, okay, that's two years, so we have to look at anything we have done differently.
Good trend now, yeah.
What you do sometimes, if you don't want to do, is overreact.
Right.
And, you know, change a program that could be working, and maybe it...
But it seems the same percentages for that particular cohort is, across the board here, is coming in that way.
Yes, and the interesting thing with science, so like, science, the ninth graders take science. So previously in math and ELA, we were talking about 10th graders. The ninth graders did very well on the biology, where in 2015, you'll see that the failures here have dropped, and the needs improvement have dropped, or actually, the percentage, should say, of advanced really grew 15% to 23%. You'll see that they've reduced their failures. They used science, biology, with, they were currently 4% below the state average this past year. The year below, we were 14% below the state average. So science, biology made some substantial gains. Even though it doesn't look great on the slide here, they actually have made some substantial gains. And that's the ninth grade class, so if I had to look in the magic ball, I would predict that this group that took the biology test could be doing very strong on math and English. Not to put any pressure on them.
No, no. It's only coming up for a couple weeks.
This slide is a slide that I used as an opportunity to really put some of these findings together. Our accountability status is level one, which is, we know, is something to be very proud of as a town. And what you're going to see in 2014, if you look at the top-left box where it says all students and high needs, high needs considers economically disadvantaged, English language learners consider students with disabilities. We have to be 75 to be a level-one school. And what you're going to see is we're narrowly getting closer to that 75 line, which kind of means we're on the level-two, level-one line. We're still level one. And the reason you'll see in red of why this number is getting closer to 75, is the high needs and economically disadvantaged groups are not narrowing their achievement gaps as much as we would like them to. And that, again, that could be very cohort-dependent, but also, what they do is they lump it, they kind of give two calculations. One is based on the prior years, so they look at kind of 2015 and 16 together when they come up with that. So that's just something we want to monitor. So I present this today, because it's, it's part of my findings, but also, it's something we are looking at. And it's something that department heads and I were having conversations about. So even though it could be cohort-specific, we don't want to overreact, we're still coming up with some ideas, and that's me doing that.
Yeah, I think the increase in the ELL students is going to affect it.
Absolutely.
Big time.
So these are all things we're considering. And AP data, just to end on a final kind of positive note here. Advanced placement has really grown substantially. In 2011, 2012, sorry, we had six AP courses. 11 last year were offered to students. And you may say, well, the blue here is Rockland, and we're below the state average, and we're below the global. And that's very normal. When you go from six to 11 courses, it takes time to get those percent of students getting passing scores, threes, fours, and fives for college credit. That takes time when you jump from six to 11. And you also have to consider, Rockland, our mentality is we want kids to get exposure to this high level of rigor. I've seen districts that will say, have such a high prerequisite, and I'll just use a town, I don't want to make up a name, a town, Town A, will say, I'm not going to let you take this AP course, you have to meet the prerequisite. So they have 10 kids taking it, they're top 10 kids, so of course, their percentage is going to be 95%. So this data can be very misleading, but you have to look at, we've expanded our offerings, more kids are getting exposed to rigor. And this slide, I think, is a better representation, where it shows that the total number of AP students from 2012 to 2016 has doubled to 136 students. That's 136 out of a population of over 600. That's pretty good. Something for us to be proud of. And then the number of exams has also doubled, and then our kids getting passing scores has doubled. So you see a lot of doubling in the last five years.
I think that's an important point, to reiterate, that you're widening your margin of who you're letting in these classes. And I think that's telling, it means a lot more than a percentage of 98 to squish it, to just your top performers that you know. So I think that's something that people shouldn't dismiss and be proud of, because you're going to bring that level of student up, and it's not going to harm someone who might be a very high performer, because you're going to still think in different perspectives.
Right.
So I definitely applaud you for that.
That's good.
That's great.
And the previous principal as well.
Well.
And our overall findings, this is kind of taking all the previous slides you've seen. The strengths you see, the strong sense of community, pride, bulldog pride, the quality of facilities, staff quality and commitment to students, the kids, and then the student achievement. And I put there, from the highest-performing students, and I put that as a strength, because you'll see that a lot of advanced in MCAS, the percentage of advanced was very high, the AP performance is very strong, the participation there is very strong. But then, I didn't, but we still need to target certain areas, our high-needs areas. So that's why you'll see the highest-performing students being targeted as a strength. For needs, you'll see scheduling and course offerings for all students, and that's really talking about some of the high-need students, whether it's English language learners, whether it's a special ed population, whether it's economically disadvantaged. And then keeping the school safe and drug-free, we talked about that a little bit earlier, increasing enrollment and managing space. And then reducing the number of students receiving failing and needs improvement on MCAS, I think any school is probably having that as a need. And then improving the passing rate on AP exams, because you can always continue to improve. So at this point, what we'll be doing is I'll be, I've shared this presentation with staff, I'm in the process of sharing it with school council, I've shared it with the school committee. What will be happening from now until the end of the year is we'll be working with Dr. Cron and his strategic, strategic plan, making sure it aligns to that. But ultimately, in the spring, I'll be having, revising the school improvement plan, so that it aligns with my findings, Dr. Cron's strategic plan, and really making sure the staff, the students, and the parents all have some input in some forum to the development of the plan.
I have one, one question that goes back to something that you had put up there, was tracking students that are going into secondary education. Do we track students that go into the trades?
We, I don't know the answer, we want to.
Yeah, I think it's important, because, you know, there are some students that are doing very, there's some students that do very well in the trades, and, you know, and that's a success for us, too.
Are you referring to like a two-year vocational trade school, like an ITT?
Going to the unions and let them...
I think we have that data somewhere.
A person thing, and whatever else the unions do.
Sure, we have that data somewhere we could pull up.
Going in there that they've learned enough, you know, and I just have from personal experiences, but, you know, that, you know, that, you know, the school has prepared them well enough to go into the trades, you know, be able to, you know, take into the information that they have, and apply that information by, you know, by the handicraft that they're, that they're working at.
That's a good point, that's good information to gather.
I personally applaud you for this report. I tell you, there's so much meat in here, you can read it 20 times and still pick things out of it. It's amazing, it's been very, very informative.
Thanks for being transparent, sharing the goods and the best. Because we need to know all of it, and you didn't, you just took it in the raw form, and I think that's very important.
Great.
Great, thank you.
Anything else? Anybody else? That's excellent, good job.
Must be difficult to present in front of the former principal, also.
Not at all, he just ignored you.
No.
Can't see you.
All right. Next on the agenda, the MOA for paraprofessional library administrators. Want to talk about that, Mr. Doc Cron?
Sure. We have, this is the paraprofessional library administrative stipend that we've talked about for quite some time. We are, again, find ourselves, it's almost comical, but not, losing a library and the day before school starts this year, so we are again in this position. But we're very fortunate to have, you know, a paraprofessional in place who I think can do the job, but we are going to post this position regardless. And it would be a $5,000 stipend in addition to a regular paraprofessioner's pay, professionals' pay, and that is for the number of students they're responsible for throughout the day, and they're looking after the middle school students and the high school students, could have as many as, you know, 60, 70 kids in a library at one time. And so, as you know, you were on the negotiating, you were the two representatives for that, so.
Oh, that was fun.
I recommend that. I don't know if you'd like me to go on to the second one?
No, they can motion, motion to approve.
Second to approve, Emily.
Okay, that one's done, thank you. And the second one is the MOA for paraprofessionals in special education.
Yes, let me see here. So, we have, and we had some issues and questions around, what am I doing here? I'm mixing them up. Well, we have a, the stipend was for someone who has to care for older students who have incontinence issues, and that's really what started this discussion. And so after, after many conversations, we discovered, we have, really, the students who are in this situation that are beyond, say, age, you know, four, age five, age six, are generally in, in specific programs within the buildings. And so we were able to write this, this memorandum of agreement to specify that it would be special education programs identified by the pupil personnel director. So, we would require that, and they would receive an additional stipend of $1,200 for the school year, and the same stipend for the 2017, 18 school year, the last two years of this current contract. And paraprofessionals, we wanted to confirm that there would always be two staff members present when assisting. I think there were, there were some personal liability, interest, concerns, but I think what really resonated with me more when we were discussing this is just, some of these kids are very large, and more than one person is really needed to take care of that. So, it's also a great opportunity to thank our paraprofessionals who do amazing work So it's also a great opportunity to thank our paraprofessionals who do amazing work every day, and through this process, this was sort of my first taste of being the person in the, in the hot seat, and I think it's important that they understand how much we appreciate the work that they do and how important they are to our district, so. I think they left the table feeling that way, that was the sense that I got.
Yeah, I totally agree, you know, because, like you said, we were on the negotiating team, and, you know, we were there for a couple minutes here and there, going back and forth, and I think it worked out.
Yeah.
Very nicely. Any other questions? Motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so, okay, get that one done. Now we have request approval for fundraisers.
Candy bars, candy bars for sale. That's exciting.
Help fund the Philly trip.
Philly trip, okay.
Grade eight Philly trip, they're going to be selling candy bars.
Yeah, candy bars, candy bars.
Who wouldn't love that?
I know.
I mean, it benefits everybody.
Okay, motion?
Second.
All in favor?
My job's hard.
Thank you.
How many candy bars I sold myself during middle school and high school?
I just think about the ones I ate.
Well, that's what I mean.
For a good cause, though.
Then you hit up the parents for the money, you know, the whole scam.
You know, quick, I'll tell you, the one is the Girl Scout cookies.
Oh.
Okay. And when I got down, my wife started yelling at me for bringing so many Girl Scout cookies home, so what I do now is I ask the girl that's selling, I say, what kind do you like? What kind? And I buy them, and I leave.
Wow, nice guy.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, so, personal information? Dr. Cron?
Nothing, nothing, just, just, there it is.
All right.
Yep.
Resignations, appointments, and, you know...
Couple resignations and...
Okay, all right, anything? Nothing there? Okay. Public service announcements.
If everyone's wondering what's on the table here, Adele nicely brought us this orange-leaf frozen yogurt. It's a very innovative idea that's being supported and driven by the Eston community. They're doing it on Fridays. It started in September. They're two dollars for a cup. It's not something they can buy on their lunch card, they have to bring money, but I just want to applaud it, because I think any healthy snack option you can give people is always a great idea, and just to get in people's minds that there are other options. So fantastic. And my second thing is Halloween is coming up, just please, please, please make sure people can see you on the sides of the roads, if you need reflectors, anything, because it gets so dark out, and it's going to be on a Monday, so I just get nervous all the time. But I love the little costumes, so I love to see people. I can't help it.
No clouds.
That's it. No clouds, yeah, no clouds.
No clouds, no clouds.
I'm with you on that. Good job.
I just, I just, you know, okay, and Mr. Phelps?
November ninth, there's an event happening at the middle school called Pizza Palooza. Now, this is be the second year, and the results of this fine event will go to One Rockland, which is, as some of you may know, the new fundraising effort in the school, hopefully to do away with some of these individual efforts. If we can raise enough money each year with one big effort, then the monies from that will help fund a lot of these littler efforts. But anyway, it's happening on the ninth in the middle school, sponsored by the Rockland Chamber of Commerce. Most pizza shops in Rockland are going to participate, in other words, donate their pizzas. People will come, individuals, I think it's a ten-dollar fee, families, there's a twenty-dollar fee, and really, when you think of it, what a great family event it would be to come up here, have slices of pizza from all the different shops. There will be a judging to, I think, decide who makes the best cheese pizza. You're one of the judges? Better you than me.
Sorry, smart man.
I've seen enough pizza for a lifetime, but anyway. To pick the best cheese pizza, and the best mushroom, whatever the different types are. But it's going to be, I think, a very, very fine event, a great event, hopefully raise a lot of money for One Rockland, but yet, even more important than that, a nice family event to attend with the kids, be with their friends, so please make every effort to attend and enjoy it.
Thank you, thank you. I have one question, because we're not going to be here again until after, what, November eleventh, twelfth, something like that?
We come back, our next meeting will be on the fourteenth of November.
Fourteenth, okay. Can you just run down for us, Ian, there's something that just came into mind, is that we have an election coming up?
An election?
Yes, on the, it's coming up. Could you give us the, with, how the traffic and, what we're doing for the cover?
Well, schools are closed that day, so that's one thing.
Okay, do we have any sports going on?
We don't have to worry about. I don't, I can't answer that, but I will find out for you, if we have sports going on that day. But the polls will definitely be open at the middle school, and I believe Eston is another, is another location.
Right, okay.
And I know that the police are, are...
So we're all covered for that?
Yes.
So I just want to make sure.
But the great thing about that is, they can vote starting today, so that, I believe it's at the town hall, so that hopefully will take some of the pressure off of the lines and the traffic and all of that, that obviously does occur here.
And the way that happens, you go to the town hall, and they get a ballot, you fill out the ballot, they put it in an envelope, and you don't count it until the election's up.
That's right. You can even print them out, they're online.
Right.
They're online, you can print them out, fill them out, and then bring it in.
And the venue's expanded, we're using the middle school gym and cafeteria.
Okay.
Instead of just the one, the one room.
Okay, oh, good. And then this says yummy, and the only other last thing is that we, Dr. Cron talked about a little bit earlier, good friend of, my, my, my wife and I are friends, they lost their son, Sean O'Connell, had gone to the wake this afternoon, and there was a huge crowd there. We got there a quarter past four, we finished up the line about quarter to six, you know, we get through there. Tomorrow, there is the funeral at Holy Family Church, and I think just everybody, just keep them in your prayers, you know, in their thoughts and prayers, and it's just, we're going through a tough time right now with that, so. With that, an entertaining motion, oh, do you, Miss Lindell, do you have anything?
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry.
I wanted to say that on this upcoming Sunday, Project Pumpkin's going on at the high school from one to four, and that's so that kids can have like a safe place to trick and treat.
Great, great. Who sponsors that?
It's run by a student government, and we get like sponsors from all the local businesses around town.
Super.
It's you, it's a great day.
All right. So what are, what are you coming in?
I'm not, nothing. You don't want me in costumes, bad enough as it is.
Make a motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening, thank you, thank you.